And speaking of citizen comment, we have gone over citizen comment period time. So, Mr. Clark, I guess we'll pause now and take the first of our four citizen comment periods for items that are not on our regular agenda. And if you'd like to speak to something that we're not going to address on the agenda, please come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us what you think. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Jim Connish. You were kind enough to respond to a request I made for this commission to help get the word out that there's a little sliver of hope for GRU ratepayers, non-residential ratepayers on their gas bill if they elect this new rate. I have a non-residential building. I got this letter dated September 23rd, offering the new rate and explaining, purporting to explain it. And basically, what they're saying here is, if you consume 50 terms, you'll save money. But the way they did it, it's very misleading. They don't mention that if you don't switch to the new rate, that $35 charge on the top line jumps to 40. So, they're understating the savings by $5. And they're also not really explaining that you have to average under 163.9 terms on a monthly basis for the rate to make sense to you, because they have this unrelated ordinance that prevents you from switching rate categories more than once per year, which is unfair, because gas rates are real seasonal. And I really encourage this commission to help us. We cannot do this alone. This is the way they're treating us. They give us this really nice rate. They don't tell about it until the last minute. Unless you really attend to meetings and pore through the ordinances, it's very difficult to even navigate something like this. There's a lot of money involved for, you know, relatively small, non-residential users, a couple hundred a year. So, maybe Mr., I was at a city commission meeting, I can't even think of his name, the communication, Sexton. Maybe he can show them how to write a letter and communicate with this rate, because they don't seem to know how to do it with a $1.5 million advertising budget. This is what we get. I'm not going to discuss the Greck noise issue, but there is a contract that is being trampled, along with city ordinances, and it is affecting people in the county. I asked my son to do his homework, as I'm sure everyone in the diocese does the same thing. Well, we did our homework. This plant is operating without ever having paid the business tax formerly known as occupational license. Why, this plant is owned by a maze of corporations. It's not being operated by those corporations. It's being operated by a contractor, N-A-E-S, all foreign corporations. They have not registered to do business in the city of Gainesville, and they're operating a biomass plant. Okay? This is the level of contempt, arrogance, and corruption between these out-of-town financiers and our city government. The contract was kept secret. The citizens have had it sued even see the contract. I really think we're going to need a grand jury investigation of this whole thing from A to Z to see how we got into this situation in the first place and where we go in the future, because the very same people that got us into this contract are just looking the other way while things go sideways. And it's affecting this community on every single level, and the effects are going to be profound, and they're going to reverberate for a minimum of 30 years. But to think that they would have the arrogance to hide behind a maze of corporations, not operate the plant, and to not even go down to the Thomas Center and pick up an application to run a business? Incomprehensible. So, if, let's say, the sheriff wanted to step in and enforce the city's noise ordinance, which the sheriff could do, we don't know who's running the plant. They've never applied to do business. They just have a P.O. box. How could that be?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, commissioners. My name's Debbie Martinez, and I want to apologize that, as you know, when I come before you, I always come prepared. Well, I've been staying up past midnight at these city meetings to try to fix the disaster of a bad contract, a 30-year contract on May 7th, 2009, that every single one of our city commissioners, and this is painful for me to say, because I'm a lifelong Democrat, they were all Democrats that voted for this bad contract. And it wasn't as if they had to go forward with it. They knew the data had changed before they went ahead and voted for this, and they did it anyway. And now, we're spending hours and millions and millions and millions of dollars to try to so-called mitigate. It's not mitigating. We're underwater. You know, they're pushing our head, and we're drowning. There's nothing you can do. And rather than working towards getting out of this bad contract, wouldn't you do that if you were a lifeguard, try to pull that person out of the water? We're trying to push all our citizens under the water. And please be patient with me, because I'm not used to not being prepared like this, and I'm trying to do the best that I can. But two words, just think of two words, 2 million. That's all it would have taken, is $2 million to get out of the bad contract after the horrible mistake to get in it. But no, the commissioners that were on the city commission kept championing something that was bad. Now, anyone that's considering to buy a home or purchases stocks and sells them like I do, if the facts change, you change or you go broke. If you love your house that you're looking to buy, and one of your husband gets fired or your family, one of your loved ones gets ill, and you know that it's not a good investment anymore, you stop. But no, we're slamming on the gas. And now, the attorney, Michelle told us that if they continue to go forward with looking to, considering to buy this thing, it could be over another million dollars just in legal fees. You know, it's just like we're doubling down on the double down. And I'm trying to be nice and polite about this as I can, but we need help over there. I mean, we really need help, and they're blaming it on the citizens that the meetings are going late. We're having all these additional special meetings, because for some reason, it appears to me that our GRU executives want to save Greck. Greck is not us. They gave us a nice fancy name. It's American Renewables. They gave us a warm, fuzzy name for the citizens to think that Gainesville renewable energy's us. It's not us. They're from Boston. These are international speculators, investors. And if they go bankrupt, that's their problem. We're here to protect our citizens. And now that it's fired up this incinerator, now it's fraught with all kinds of problems. We've got mountain sky-high of wood chips with dust. As you know, your compound is right next to it, city, I mean, county employees that work outside. The Department of Environmental Protection said the acceptable level of fugitive dust is zero. And your program director, Michael Fay, got up here before you and said the vehicles are covered with dust. So, what about the lungs of your county employees? And then the noise, and I'm not going to talk about it, because it's on the agenda, and I don't want to violate any rules. But this is really a problem, and we need your help. And annoying noise does not require a meter. Stop looking at meters. Plainly audible is all you need to enforce a noise ordinance, because it can't be measured in decibels. So, we need your protection, and we're really, this community's in a bad situation. We need to look out for our residents and not worry about saving Greck. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Ernesto Martinez. You know, we're, what is it, about the 8th or the 9th of October, Halloween is coming up. But you don't have to wait till then to go trick-or-treating. Y'all just need to go across the street over there to one of those city commission meetings. We have sat through about 14 to 15 to 16 hours of listening to expert after expert, consultant after consultant, financial genius after financial genius. Oh, and by the way, the new word, in case y'all haven't heard it, is NUCO. NUCO, that's a new, a different word for conduit. What it means is exotic financing techniques to try to salvage this scheme that is totally out of control. We need to resolve this. I don't know what y'all can do to help, but if we don't do something, we, the city of Gainesville, which is Elatua County, is going to be in bankruptcy. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being with us. Anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period? Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Jane Hendricks from Turkey Creek. I, last night, learned of a document called the Comprehensive Plan, or the Intergovernmental Coordination Element, known as the COMP Plan. And it was enacted as far back as 1999, from what I can tell. It's on the Gainesville City website. But, and I'll read from the opening statement. It says, apparently, the goal number one is to coordinate the plans and activities of the various units of government to promote effective, efficient, comprehensive planning and provision of urban services, and to mitigate potential conflicts between jurisdictions. Further down in the second paragraph, the last sentence says, "The joint processes shall include coordination on siting of facilities with countywide significance, including locally unwanted land uses." Turning to point, item number 1.1.6, it states, "The city shall provide notice of proposed land use amendments and development proposals to Elatua County and impacted municipalities within the county, and provide opportunity for the concerns of these local governments to be addressed in the review process." Objective 1.5 of that document says that the city shall continue to work with Elatua County, the several municipalities, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Water Management Districts, and the United States Environmental Protection Agency, Santa Fe College, and U.F., to protect groundwater and other environmental resources throughout Elatua County. If you then turn, and both of these documents are on the Gainesville City website, the first one is the Intergovernmental Coordination Element, and under that, it's got goals, objectives, and policies, and then another document titled Data and Analysis. The Intergovernmental Coordination Element, Data and Analysis, if you turn to page 16 of that document, it lists a number of areas of the county that are supposed to be considered, protected, whatnot. At the bottom of page 16, it says Hague Flatwoods. This is a 6,344-acre site that contains the Deer Haven Power Station. It contains large areas of basin swamp and many cypress domes. The area is also part of the headwaters of both Rocky Creek and Turkey Creek. The Hague Flatwoods are beyond the U.R.A., and I don't know what the U.R.A. is, I'm sorry. That's all I have now. I'll speak later on the noise issues. Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. Anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period? Good morning.
Good morning. Harold Saif, for the record. I'm on the, on the board of the Elatua County Environmental Protection Board, but I'm not here representing them. I'm just here to present some non-noise evidence having to do with the biomass plant. You can get the overhead, please. Thank you. This is a photograph associated with a foul odor, and a recent morning, sleepless and Hague citizen took these photographs and associated this photograph, the second photograph here in the road, all associated with emissions coming from the biomass incinerator, including this third image here, that completely produced a bio haze, and their estimation. This is proof of nothing. This is proof only that we need to keep asking questions. The time is running out. We got October 22nd as a deadline for the city to buy the biomass plant. And last night, they proceeded to offer, to make an offer. And our timeline is much longer than that, if you want to talk about E-PAC. That investigation will go on long after any decision is made to purchase the plant or not purchase the plant. So, we're in kind of a timeline dilemma, Mr. Chair. I wish that we could consider that ongoing and reasonable intervention to prevent the worst possible scenarios and the outcomes on this. Have more for you on the noise issue later. Thank you.
Appreciate you being with us. Anyone else like to speak during citizen comment period? All right, then, we're going to close out the first of our four citizen comment periods and return to where we were on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, where was that?
Mr. Chair, returning then to your advisory board appointments. Your first is, or the last appointment this morning, anyway, will be the request to appoint one citizen to the citizen-at-large position on the local planning agency and planning commission. And this commission is responsible for the preparation and comprehensive, of the comprehensive plan, reviewing and making recommendations on rezoning, special use permits, temporary use permits, and on land development regulations.
Okay, and the two applicants are Harvey Budd and Forrest Edleton, who was here earlier. Is either of them here or still here? And if so, if you'd like to speak, please come forward, either microphone, introduce yourself. Good morning.
Good morning. Harvey Budd, I feel like I'm having deja vu, but from last meeting. Last time, I mentioned to you that I felt that my experience was a very important factor in keeping me on the board, for beyond the extent, beyond the normal range of terms. And we got feedback from some of the commissioners, and I thanked them for their comments. They're very positive, and their theory of government. And I respect their theory of government. Sometimes, I wish that would apply to county commissioners also. That would be a nice thing, but we do know that, you agree, Susan?
I agree.
Big believer in term limits in general. However, back to the question of whether I should stay on this board or be eliminated. I spent a lot of time thinking about it, and I came to a conclusion, it's a mild conclusion, that I really was needed another two years, at least two years. It would be very helpful. The reason I say two years versus four years is because I felt like the people that are serving on the board, that currently serve, didn't get a really good opportunity to get much experience in the last two years. Due to the economics of today, we had, I think, nine meetings in the prior year and eight the prior before that. Some of those meetings were only 10 or 15 minutes. One even lasted five minutes, but it counts as a meeting. So, in real terms, they've only had a year's experience. And so, we have a very, very inexperienced board. We're on TV, like you guys are, and I just think it would be very helpful that I stay on for another two years, not four years, another two years. If you can't do that, then that's understandable, because, again, I agree with you about term limits. But I think it is a marginal call. I think the gentleman that is applying is a good man. Last time, you put me on, and then Jennifer Springfield was my competition, and she came back two years later, and she said to me personally, when I asked the question, to the board members, should I serve? She says she was happy that I, she waited two more years. So, she got a little more experience, was focused, and got to experience the time I was on the board. Now, I think I do add a lot to the meetings. I've talked to staff. I asked staff what they thought, and they agreed with me. Now, if the historical board had a gentleman that lasted, was it seven terms? I think that's a little bit far, but from a historical standpoint, it's a great thing. Sometimes, there's an exception to the rule, and all I, due to my age, I'm only good for about two years. So, yeah, I've got other things to do. I can't be dedicating every, a month, a month, Wednesday night. But I really do think a two-year term would be very helpful to the board, and that the gentleman who is much younger than I am, that we heard from his resume, is very qualified. Yeah, I believe two more years later wouldn't hurt him at all, and my two years would be significantly better and could do a better job for the commission. I don't know what comprehensive plan changes are anticipated next two years. Hopefully, there aren't too many. But there is some knowledge that I can partake, and I really hope that you think favorably on my speech and my application. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for being with us. Who else would like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you again, commissioners. I just wanted to take the opportunity to really thank everyone for giving me the opportunity just to devote myself to the county that I love so much. Thank you.
Appreciate you being with us. Okay, I guess the time has come for a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, let's appoint one citizen to a term in July 31st, 2017, and the sheet says Commissioner Hutcheson votes first this time.
Harvey Budd.
Commissioner Pinkerson.
Budd.
Commissioner Baird.
Edleton, please.
Commissioner Chestnut.
Budd.
Mr. Chair.
Edleton.
Mr. Chair.
Move Harvey Budd.
Second. Moving seconded, further discussion from the board? Okay, one in the public would like to comment on the motion. All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. As always, we had more good, qualified applicants than we can have positions for on our advisory board appointments. Mr. Edleton, we appreciate your willingness to serve. Please keep your application current. I'm sure that you'll be able to be appointed in the near future. You're obviously qualified for the position, and thanks for being with us. And congratulations, Mr. Budd. Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, is it my understanding, then, you want to move to item 15 on your agenda? This is the, you mentioned moving some items forward.
Just ask a quick question. How many folks are here for the Greck biomass plant update? Just a quick show of hands. Okay? How many folks here for the fairgrounds issue? Okay? And I think we have a few folks here for the Florida Water and Land Conservation Amendment. Okay, then, let's go ahead and take the biomass issue first. It looks like we have the largest attendance.
Mr. Chair, then, that's item 15 on your agenda. This is an informational update to the board regarding the noise and dust issues related to the new Greck biomass plant.
Good morning.
I'm Rick Wolf with Growth Management Department, and together, myself and Chris Bird have been asked to provide a update as far as the Gainesville Regional Energy Centers, or what's known as Greck's biomass plant, an information update as it relates to both noise and dust. First, just a little history in terms of location. The plant, as we know it, is located within the city of Gainesville city limits in Section 27 Township 8 South Range 19 East. Its property is owned by the city of Gainesville. The plant is owned by the Greck facility, and GRU is currently just purchasing energy from that. They are not a owner at this time. The address is 11201 Northwest Highway 441, and it's adjacent and directly west to the existing GRU Deer Haven Power Plant. The residential neighborhoods to the south...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Wolf, would you please, for purposes of the minutes, announce about the handout and the correction of the record, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Mr. Chair, there has been a handout that has been distributed to you of the slide presentation, and we have given a copy to the clerk for inclusion in the minutes. Thank you for that reminder. Mr. Chair, the residential neighborhoods both to the south and southwest, which is known as the Turkey Creek area, are located within the corporate city limits of the city of Elatua. And the Elatua County Public Works complex, or compound in Hague, as it is known, is located directly and adjacent to the west of the Greck facility. This is a map that shows the facility location along 441. Here's the Greck power plant location. The area shown in blue is the corporate city limits of Gainesville, in the blue area. The area shown in salmon, I guess, is the city of Elatua. And the area shown in white is unincorporated Elatua County. Right there, where the arrow is pointing, is the Public Works complex in Hague, our Public Works Department. And this, again, is the entrance to Greck and where the power plant is located. So, that gives you a little visual idea. We can look at an aerial photograph of that same given area. Again, Turkey Creek to the south and southwest, the Elatua County Public Works complex to the west, and the Greck facility just west of the Deer Haven Power Plant. This is confusing to some people, because most people think of 441 going north and south. So, there, a lot of people have given some confusing directions. As it comes around Turkey Creek, it goes west, and a lot of people have given misinformation in directions. Little closer view, you can see the Public Works complex is directly to the west of the plant, and to the property line from the plant itself is approximately 1,000 feet. And I want to point this aerial out, because I'm going to show you some measurements that I took in a little bit. One directly on the east side of the Public Works Garage Complex, and another directly west of the plant fuel storage yard. But that gives you a good aerial view of the location of the plant. This plant is a 100-megawatt biomass-powered renewable energy facility. The plant is currently in a transition stage from construction to operation. It does not have its operating permit or certificate of occupancy at this time. The plant began testing in a shakedown operation in latter part of August, and as a result, we have received the city, the county, the city of Elatua, numerous complaints regarding both noise and dust. County staff did inspect the facility on September 12th, 2013, with employees from Public Works, Environmental Protection, Growth Management, and our communications office. The noise complaints that have come in have primarily originated from the residential subdivisions to the south and southwest in the Turkey Creek area. And the dust complaints, for the most part, have been an issue with the Public Works If I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to talk a little bit about noise and just give you a brief overview. I have, I guess, had the fortune of being in code enforcement and regulatory community for quite a long while, and going all the way back to the '70s. I was chosen as a municipal employee that got to go get trained on community noise control with the Environmental Protection Agency. Shortly after, the Quiet Communities Act was developed in a program called Each Community Helps Others or Echo with the Environmental Protection Agency. So, that gives you a little background of why I'm here, rather than someone else talking about noise. Noise measurement is typically done, it's measuring sound, unwanted sound is what is called noise, and noise is measured, it's a form of energy. Sound energy is measured in sound pressure levels or in decibels. You can look at typical outdoor and indoor sound noises, sound levels, and the one I wanted to point out to you in this kind of thermometer of decibel levels, the different areas, is in the 40 to 50 range would be quiet urban neighborhoods at night. So, that gives you a good, you know, 48, 50, typical urban neighborhood, suburban neighborhood at night. But there's some things I want to talk to you a little bit about in terms of decibel In the theoretical world, in other words, if you took noise and measured it in a vacuum, you just do the physics and the math, and it's pretty simple. But in the real world, it doesn't, doesn't quite happen that way. In the real world, we have reflection, refraction, diffraction, diffusion, atmospheric conditions, humidity, temperature, wind direction, absorption from the ground, vegetation from water. So, all of these have some impact on how to do noise measurement, and it's not as pure a science as if you did it in a vacuum. And then, there's also background levels and other noises that occur. So, how do you, how do you get a true measurement? How do you know, okay, is this in violation of a noise ordinance or it's not? And I guess... or it's not? And I guess the best way to do that is to try to simulate the human ear. At least, that's what was felt by many of people that have written noise control ordinances. So if you simulate the human ear, that must be, if you mirror what the human ear hears, and that's a range of frequencies from 20 hertz to 20,000 hertz, then that's probably a good indicator of whether it's going to be annoying or not. Well, sounds good in theory, but it's not always true. We know that, in the theoretical world, if you look at decibels, if you increase a decibel level by about 3 dB, you're going to barely be able to tell the difference between one sound and another, even if it's increased by 3B. When it gets to a 5-decibel level, you could probably tell the difference, okay, something's changed, the volume's gone up. However, at 10 decibels, when you double, when you increase a decibel level by 10 decibels, you double the volume. If you decrease it by 10 decibels, you half the volume. So what I'm getting at is it's not additive, it's logarithmic. So for each doubling of the distance away from the source, when you double the distance, you reduce the decibel level by 6 decibels. And then you double the distance again, that's 6 more decibels. And the reason I think about that is when we start talking about going a mile or 2 miles away from the plant, when you go 100 feet, you've reduced it by 6, and then 200 feet, and then 400 feet, and then 800 feet. So it's, it's, it's not hard to do the math to say, well, the decibel level a mile away or 2 miles away is going to be significantly reduced from the source of the sound. Mr. Chair, a little bit about why this, why this is important, and when we measure noise in decibel levels, and most standards have gone, some ordinances have gone to looking at decibels plus a plainly audible standard to kind of cover both sides of the story. Well, most noise ordinances that are just decibel levels have a deficiency. And that deficiency is that based on the A-weighted scale standard, which is what most simulates the human ear, is that it deducts sound energy from low frequencies, often providing misleading results relative to actual annoyance of a low-frequency sound. When you look at an overview of regulations, you know, that are model regulations that have been done by the state, by EPA, by local governments, in the past, they looked at decibel levels, and now they're looking more towards a combination of both other types of measurements as well as the DBA measurement. Another way of doing that is with what would be called the C-scale or flat scale for measuring decibels. But the more precise way of doing it is probably using octave-band frequency measurement, where you're actually looking at different sections of the low frequency, mid-range frequency, and high frequencies to try to analyze specifically what's causing the source of the noise. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about jurisdiction. As I mentioned, back in 1972, the Environmental Protection Agency, the US government enacted a noise control regulation called the Noise Control Act of 1972. And they delegated the authority to the EPA to do some things regarding community noise. They came up with the Quiet Communities Act of 1978, formed the ECHO Program, and trained municipal government employees throughout the country on how to do noise regulation. Unfortunately, this program in 1982 with the reorganization of the Environmental Protection Agency was totally eliminated. I think that program served a valuable service to local governments. So then the Florida Legislature delegated the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to establish standards for the abatement of excessive and unnecessary noise. And it's mentioned in the Florida Constitution that that's an issue that should be regulated. However, the Florida DER reports that the department does not have any rules regulating noise at this time. As recently as a week ago, I got an email confirming that from the DER, the state agency. So the regulation of noise has basically been passed on or left up to the responsibility of local governments. Mr. Chair, the location of this plant is within the corporate city limits of the city of Gainesville. The city of Gainesville is responsible for the noise standard as found in Chapter 15 of the City of Gainesville Municipal Code, since the Greck facility is within the municipal boundaries of the city of Gainesville. Both in the siting certification and in the ordinance, it designates the jurisdiction to be with the city of Gainesville. Alachua County does have a noise ordinance, Chapter 110 of the Alachua County Code, but it does not apply to receptor properties within the city of Gainesville or within the city of Alachua. To the best of my knowledge, the city of Alachua does not have a noise ordinance at this time. They have a nuisance ordinance, but not a noise ordinance. There's one area where the Alachua County noise ordinance may apply, and this is if the receptor property is in the unincorporated area of the county. In other words, within the city of Gainesville, if a noise is created and it crosses county boundaries into the unincorporated area, we may have jurisdiction there according to our ordinance.
Now, Mr. Wolf, the backup does, it says it does apply, and you just said it may apply. Can you clarify?
It, it does apply if it's a violation.
Okay.
Yeah, it does apply.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, we know that the Greck site certification application states that the noise standard contained in Chapter 15, and this, this is their application to the state government, is that the noise in the city of Gainesville Municipal Code is the applicable standard for which the plant has to meet. The Greck siting certification application provides noise modeling that concludes, and this is real important, Greck's operations will not have any significant impact on the nearest residential development to the Greck site. This was the, based on the model analysis that was done by their consultant. And in the DEP Conditions of Certification dated December 15th, 2010, it requires that the licensee shall comply with applicable local noise ordinances during construction and operation of the certified facility. That's found on page 26 of that document, and that applicable code is, in this case, the city of Gainesville. So, Mr. Chair, as I mentioned, staff took a tour on, took a detailed inspection on September 12th, 2013, and I'd like to share a little bit of that with you since you weren't there to join us. Again, we were properly equipped with safety equipment and toured the entire property facility. We looked at a variety of noise sources, and I want to point out that in a large industrial operation such as this, there are a variety of noise sources. The stack itself, and the vents and fans that go to the stack, this is a piece of machinery that's known as a de-erator. This is what removes oxygen from the water that's going in through the plant, various dust collection and vent devices, the water cooling system, the unloading operation for the fuel. As you can see, semi-tractor trailers pull up on a ramp, and that's loaded into, the whole truck is tipped to dump the fuel. The reclamer, which is this metal device here that actually picks up the fuel material, and the conveyor belt system that takes the fuel to the plant. The dust collector and conveyor machinery, this is a dust collector that is probably one of the furthest pieces of mechanical device, devices to the west, closest to the Public Works Complex. And I want to point this out because I, when I was out there, I took my own noise meter, and I did a couple of measurements myself. And one of the things I noticed, and I mentioned all the different things that can affect noise, is, is this, this particular dust collector, which pulls out dust from the conveyor that's bringing stuff to the plant, was pretty high in volume, pretty high in noise level. And right behind it was a pile that's about 60 feet tall that can reflect noise back to the west. So there's some things that I noticed at the plant that probably could, could be changed to help things. Okay, so in real life, what did this sound like? I want to give you a little, little close-up and personal. Mr. Chairman, one of the things that, that I noticed in this dust collection system was that it was, and you hear kind of two things. You hear kind of a low roar, and you hear some squeaking. The squeaking, in my opinion, was coming from the conveyor system and reclamer, metal-on-metal pulley system, and the low roar was coming from this dust collection system. And the vent was pointed to the west. It would have been very easy to reconfigure that, to point it to the east, and, and possibly to eliminate reflection. So these are some of the things that can be done quite easily to reduce noise levels. Okay. So I took a noise level reading, 30 seconds here of the dust collection system, and I got an average reading of 82 decibels. The high, 88, the low, 76. And this is standing at the source of the machinery. The meter was reading 83 when I, when I took that reading. And you can graph it out and get a pretty good indication of what that source sound is coming from in a DBA, A-weighted scale measurement. So you can compare this number to the model number that was done in the analysis, and you can compare it to the post-studies that are done. And the point I'm trying to make here is the data's the data. Whether, whether the county does it, whether ECT does it, whether Hessler does it, whether a third-party consultant does it, the data's going to be pretty factual. It's what you do with the data that, that I think is important. Okay, so then I also took another reading, and this is standing at the Public Works Complex at the eastern fence line, in the same east-west direction as that dust collector system. The reading I got here was an average of 52, a low of 48, and it went up to 61 when I went to shut off the meter. It was reading 49 when, when I did this snapshot in time. As you can see, going from that 1,000 feet, remember I mentioned 1,000 feet? It reduced from 82 to 49. So distance plays a very important role in sound level reduction for the A-weighted scale of what would be heard by the human ear. And as I mentioned in the application that was submitted to the siting certification, there was a noise study done, an analysis done by the consultant, ECT, and basically the Greck noise modeling results was submitted as part of that package. This diagram shows the modeling of noise levels in different rings that is anticipated, you know, as part of the noise prediction model. There's a software called CADNA-A that is state-of-the-art for doing noise modeling, and this is what was used. Here's a list of the variety of sources that can generate noise and what their projected noise levels were thought to be based on this, this modeling. And as you note, it, well, you can see hopefully that it's split into different octave bands, different frequencies, from 31.5 up to 8,000, and then a total decibel level in the A-weighted scale. I keep pointing out the octave band of frequencies because I think that's an important piece of the puzzle. And from that data, the conclusions that the, the modeling analysis showed is the city of Gainesville's maximum sound level is 66 in the day and 60 at night. They looked at receiver locations along the entire fence line of the property around Greck, and then also 200 feet from the fence line, which is what the city of Gainesville says, that's where you have to measure to see if you get a violation. In no case did the modeling show that it, it was anywhere close to 60 or 66 decibels. So this was what was submitted as an application. From this, the application concluded, no significant noise impacts will occur to residential neighborhoods nearby. And that's the standard, I think, that Greck needs to be held to. So what do we know, and what are the issues? Generating noise from various sources that are audible to residential neighborhoods are primarily occurring in the city of Alachua. Noise is more noticeable at night and early morning hours, and that's when the, the background levels and the ambient mix is a little lower. You know, typically at night, things quiet down, you have less road traffic, you have other pieces of machinery that are not operating. So the background level gets lower, and it makes that ambient noise or the noise coming from the power plant seem louder. But it really doesn't increase the volume. You can take and go out to Turkey Creek and take measurements, and you're probably still going to get something in the 48 to 52 range at night. What you would get similar to background level if that plant was not running. And this, this has basically been determined recently when ECT went out there and took additional readings. The city of Gainesville, and, and from the measurements that I've taken, and the measurements that the consultant have taken, we have not found a violation of the measurements according to the DBA scale, A-weighted scale. There's been no violations of that city ordinance based on two different groups that went out and measured. Lieutenant Ferreira with one group, and I think Lieutenant Campos and the Alachua County Sheriff's Office with another group, in addition to the ECT study and snapshot measurements that I took. However, the site certification, noise modeling, and predictions are probably not in line with actual impacts to the nearby residential communities, and this is so far during startup and testing. Greck is the first to admit that, yeah, something's being heard out there. Something is audible. We do know that to be the case. And is it that background's lower, and that's why they're hearing it? Or is there some other reason? And that's what they're trying to investigate now. Noise measurements that were completed by ECT has shown that there is some impact out there, that, I mean, they're hearing it, but it doesn't show higher decibel levels. So further analysis is underway to isolate specific noise sources. Remember I showed you the, the modeling that showed all the noise sources and what the predicted noise levels are? Now they're going back and looking at, okay, what are the actual noise levels, source by source? And this requires very detailed machinery, measuring devices that do octave-band frequency measurement. This is what is being used to plan a strategy for mitigation or abatement through noise modeling of the plant. They have contacted, contracted with a firm called Hessler Associates out of Virginia, and late September, they came in for two or three days and took detailed measurements of both the plant proper, the receptor areas around the property line and 200 feet, and also measurements within Turkey Creek. Mr. Chair, they are back this morning. They have come up with some preliminary results that they have provided to Greck, and they are back this morning isolating on the sound levels that they think are the biggest problem, and looking at more measurements so they can determine the best strategy for attenuation, mitigation, or abatement. The ECT study that was done in mid-September, again, took specific measurements of the plant and both DBA measurements and octave-band readings. This is an aerial, or a map view of the receptor locations that they took measurements at, including Turkey Creek. This, oops, excuse me. The second map shows the actual measurements when the plant was running at 100% full capacity. Within their boundaries, you know, 72, 61, 53, and 51. But over in the Turkey Creek area, 50 to 58- But over in the Turkey Creek area, 50 to 58, 54 to 55, 48 to 52, 49 to 51. Again, not a decibel level violation. Remember, I said that some of the low-frequency sounds aren't good for measurement with decibel level? The vibration, sometimes you might've been at an intersection and a boombox is playing, you don't hear the music, you just hear the vibration and the noise sounds. Well, that's this low-frequency issue. So, our preliminary findings are that residential neighborhoods, and primarily Turkey Creek has filed numerous complaints on noise impact. To date, the city of Gainesville and consultants have not been able to find violations of the Gainesville noise ordinance based on the DBA levels, and have not come to a conclusion that this is a violation of their plainly audible standard. Greck has concluded that their operations were audible from Turkey Creek, and they are conducting specialized investigations to provide additional engineering solutions to reduce noise levels. Some actions have already been taken. For example, the dust collector that I showed you, they have reversed that and put the vent on the other side. They have come up with a lubricating system for the reclamer. They're insulating on the top of the conveyor hog screen building. They've provided pressure adjustments to the de-aryator system, which has reduced the PSI and reduced the sound coming off of that system. But what they have now found is they feel that there is some issues with the stack itself and that the noise source generated by the stack, and that's why they came back to do more analysis today. Today, the plant is running at 100% capacity, and they're doing analysis from the top of the boiler as we speak.
Mr. Wolf, is it going to be running all day?
Will it be running all day? I believe it will.
Okay, thanks.
So, measurement of DBA does not tell the whole story, and I think we need to get off the issue, okay, whether it is or isn't a violation based on the measurement. We need to concentrate on, okay, what's causing the annoyance and how do we eliminate it or mitigate it? And as I said before, the data's the data. I don't think that, yeah, ECT is a local reputable firm. Alachua County has used them for consulting. I don't think they're going to change their numbers just because they're doing it for a company that's paying the bill for the study. So, I think we need to look at the number itself. Where are we in terms of options or recommendations? I think that we need to utilize, if possible, an outside consultant to provide a peer review at most. I don't think the county should do a detailed study at this point in time. That would probably cost in the neighborhood of $25,000 just to do the study, not including the mitigation. We have gotten estimates in those range. A peer-review study would probably be around $8,000 to $9,000. If we went out and tried to buy the equipment and do it ourselves today, the sophisticated equipment that you need to do octave-band analysis is over $10,000. We have talked to 3M Company and Quest Electronics and gotten estimates on outdoor kits for noise control, and, again, I think the biggest bang for the buck would be to look at a peer review of the data that's coming in and whether or not that that is sound. Once that is done, we need to determine a course of action based on the data and the consultant recommendations being provided. If it comes to the conclusion that the biggest source of the noise, this roaring that is occurring in the Turkey Creek area is from the stack itself, there is engineering fixes, but it's not a simple fix. It's not something that they go screw on and it happens overnight. There's going to have to be some detailed design and engineering to work on that problem. But I think we need to let them get through the testing and certification process to do that. The other thing I think we need to do is request the city of Gainesville to initiate measures to ensure that they're going to hold to that standard that was in the siting certification, that no significant noise impact to residential communities occur as per the siting. Chair, that includes the comments on noise. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Chestnut. Thank you, by the way, for a very thorough presentation. You covered all the bases. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I have a couple of questions. I'm on page floor four of the document you gave to us, but I guess it has the noise measurement at Greck. It says 83 dB, and then it has 49 dB. Did I hear you say that the 49 dB you were within so many feet of the actual noise?
Mr. Chair, if you look at the graphic there, that's the decibel level reading that I took at the east fence line of, well, the fence line between Greck and the Public Works garage.
Okay.
How many feet is that?
He said 1,000.
About 1,000 feet. Which would be about right here. And this is that, right in this area is where that dust collector was. This was the measurement standing right-
Right next to it.
Right on it.
Okay.
And this was the measurement about 1,000 feet away.
Okay, about 1,000 feet away.
Yes, sir.
And what was the noise that were heard in Turkey Creek? You said that they had did a, was 149 or something? Yeah, I can't see it on my document. I can't see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I can't even read it from there, so...
It's, the closest one is 50 to 58.
50 to 58?
54 to 55, a little further to the south and to the west, it's 48 to 52 and 49 to 51. These were done by ECT, and they were done while the plant was in 100% operation. They were at full capacity operating, and the readings were done.
Okay, and when you gave us that example, was that example at 1,000, at 1,000 feet?
No, sir. This is, from the entrance to the plant is about .7 miles, and from some of the, this is in the vicinity of some of the complainant's house, houses, 1.0 to 1.3 to 1.5 miles in the Turkey Creek area.
Okay. All right. I guess my next question is, in terms of the plant, is the plant in full operation now?
Mr. Chair, it is at full operation and operating at 100%, which means they're generating 100 megawatts electricity per day.
And it's functioning seven days a week?
During, as I understand it, and I can't speak for Greck, but during this testing and shakedown phase, they're trying to reach the full capacity, they're trying to test various parts of equipment. For example, at one point in time, they could only get to 97% of their operating capacity and wanted to, in their testing, to get to a maximum load of 100% or 103%. They shut down the system to replace a governor valve, and they had to cool down the boilers and start it up again, and that takes about a three-day process. There is safety mechanisms that would automatically shut portions of the plant down if they have issues. There is issues that have to be shut down in order to change the vent or to reduce pressure. And all these things they're experimenting with to make sure that they are fine-tuning this, and both from an engineering standpoint and from an operational standpoint. There's been some misinformation in terms of how they're operating that has come out at times. They have stated that they will not start up the plant during the evening hours after 6 until 8:00 a.m. The hope is the plant runs 24 hours a day, but the startup has, they feel generated more noise than just the normal operation, and so they're trying to only do startup during the daytime when the background levels are higher.
So, you can't really determine what the actual noise is going to be after the testing? And this because, because they're still testing, so they're still, so that the noise will probably be still greater, right?
Well, they can do testing while it's at 100% capacity in what they look at as normal operation.
But if they're not at normal operation, how would you know? I mean, that's...
Well, I mean, they're in normal operation in that they're not starting up and they're doing their normal routine as they project it to be. So, and what they're testing now is each individual source of equipment to see, okay, what operational or engineering methods can they use to first lower the decibel level or mitigate it? And as we understand from correspondence yesterday, they are focusing in on the top of the stack and the boiler as being the sound that they think is carrying further that they're looking for engineering solutions for.
Okay, and you stated also about the dust, that they have done some things to, I guess...
Mr. Chair, the dust is part two of the presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris Burden just a minute for that presentation.
Okay, okay. I'll wait then, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I guess we're going to take questions regarding noise, and we're going to have a second part of the presentation, and we'll ask questions about that, and then we're going to open it up to the public. Okay, questions then about the noise part of it. Commissioner Baird, your light was on.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you dividing the two up so we don't lose our train of thought in one category and then have the other separate category. I think that was a wise decision. I guess I had a couple of different questions. First and foremost is, when is the CO expected?
I don't know that I can answer that technically. It was our understanding that they were trying by the end of the month to turn it over from the contractor to Greck officially.
Okay, the CO is certificate of occupancy for the operation, and that's a very important deadline, because that's, you know, that's when you issue your permanent permit, and I think that that's a very important date to take into consideration because we have much more opportunity for either requests, modifications, I mean, just a lot more leverage because then you won't issue that permit if they haven't complied with the things they've done, and then therefore they cannot, you know, continue. So, that's an important date. So, that would be critical, I think, to get an understanding. So, when is that, what I call, drop-dead date?
Chair, if I may, I think that the certificate of occupancy, as far as construction goes, is issued by the city of Gainesville and Alachua County. But the operating permit that is issued by the State Department of Environmental Regulation, that probably won't even be applied for January and may take up to a year to be issued, and Chris Burden may be able to shed a little more light on that. But there's going to be some more opportunities for all parties concerned to address that through the state as far as the meeting their operating standards.
Okay, so just to reiterate that you're expecting, and we can confirm this later, the certificate of occupancy at the end of this month being October.
That was the information relayed us through, I believe, through Greck, that they anticipated turning this over to the, from the current contractor, which is Fagan, to Gainesville Renewable Energy.
Okay, good. All right, that's, that was an important date because one of my other, yeah, I guess the next question and/or comment was, and I see these readings, these decibels, and the issue that I'm looking at in terms of what is the best strategy to take is, number one, we're talking about a 30-year issue, something that's going to be running allegedly in the potential, and what the contract is is for 30 years. Given that, the recommendation for a peer review, and I had asked that question yesterday when I met with the Ms. Manager and the attorney, were the cost of the study. And, you know, I'm thinking if it's, you know, $100, $200,000 for an independent study, I'm thinking, well, that's expensive, and, you know, then we really would think twice about the importance. But again, you know, we're talking about a 30-year contract. So, when I see that the peer review is $8,000 to $9,000, yet the full study itself, and now we're only talking about for one month, to do a 24/7 type of a analysis to now specifically determine independently what that, you know, a noise study, I honestly believe would be a very wise use of funds, and that would either confirm or refute the findings of the other company, and I'm sure it's a great company, but again, it was requested by the company itself. So, it's almost like the IRS doing an investigation on the IRS. Well, you just don't do that. I mean, good lord, you have somebody else do something to really see if, again, it either confirms or it denies or refutes. So, that would be my recommendation as I go forward, and there maybe there'll be some more questions or issues to talk about, but it would be from today, which already is, what, October 8? From October 8 through the end of the month, to go ahead and get that going on a 24/7 level, and hopefully, it'll take into consideration startups, shutdowns, you know, going on, you know, just all of that in the different locations, then determine what is at impact. So, that's my recommendation, and I'd love to hear some other thoughts from some other folks. And, you know, when we're talking about a noise ordinance and the 60 decibels and all of that kind of thing, there's two issues here. The first one is, for example, express, you know, highway expressway. Well, people do, you know, live by them, but the difference there is that they knew moving into that, or they knew as they were purchasing that property, or that that noise was going to be there. It was their choice to say, "It doesn't bother me. I know it's there. It's fine." Now, somebody else may say, "Well, that's a deal breaker for me. I'm not going to deal with it." The difference here is that this plant, when doing the town hall meetings, said, "You won't even know we're here," which to me indicates, "You won't hear us, you won't smell us, and you won't even feel our presence in dust, particulates, whatever the case may be." So, that to me is, again, and I'm surprised that somebody would make a claim such as that, because as we see on all the historical plants, there's a pretty consistent track record that there are noise issues, dust issues. I mean, there's just issues in, we already saw a recent issue in South Carolina, I believe it was, and others, in Burlington and others. I mean, you just Google it and you hear it all. So, I think as we take into consideration what is the accurate or proper noise levels, when we look at that and we say, "Well, is this, you know, above the decibel level or is it above the 'you won't even know we're here' level?" I mean, that to me is kind of a promise. I don't know. So, it's going to be a lot more complicated than we thought because that is something that these folks did not choose when they purchased their residence, whether it be in Hague, and not just our own people, because I think our folks over at the Public Works are even wearing masks. And so, it's a concern. We're concerned for our people, so we should also be concerned for those that live in another municipality within our county. And also, there's nearby, I believe, other home sites nearby that may not be here for whatever reason. I don't know, but we need to be responsible for them as well. And some, I think, are in the unincorporated area, and some of them are also in the city of Gainesville, which I think they should be concerned about. We should be concerned about everybody. So, those are kind of the three issues that I have on mind, and that's, I think I'm going to end up putting a motion down at some point to go ahead and authorize staff to go ahead and hire an independent consulting firm to do a reading from now, at least until the, or maybe even continuation, because if we do have other recourse to go to the state as well, even though this drop-dead date is not really an end-all-be-all, it's a great place to start because that is where we have the most leverage. So, I think that would be one of the recommendations, and I'd be open to hear how long this study could or should go and whether the 25- study could or should go, and whether the $25,000 was for a month, two months, five months, a year. I don't know what that timeframe was, so we can determine what that would be. But I think the sooner we get started on that, the better, because time is running out, at least on the certificate of occupancy aspect of it. So, that's all I have for this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I would request commissioners ask questions at this point, and then we're going to get to the second part of the presentation. Again, ask any questions. I want to go ahead and get to the public as soon as possible, and then we'll bring it back to the board for a thorough discussion. Mr. Hedrick, did you want to add something at this point?
Yes, I do, with Mr. Wolf's help. I'd like to follow up a little bit on Commissioner Chestnut's question, because I think it's a point of emphasis. You were asking, Commissioner, about the decibel readings, and then you alluded to Turkey Creek. I think, and correct me, Mr. Wolf, if I'm wrong, but we, we suspect that the issue in Turkey Creek is going to be more in the area of those lower octaves. And we also think that, which is different than this reading, and we also suspect that it's not only the lower octaves, but the fact that it's continuous. It's not a, it's, it doesn't go up and down, and there's no variety. It's just continuous once it's operational. And then, of course, the third thing is during startup. So, if they're down for any reason, and they do a startup, and they do have to restart at night, that's, of course, going to be a brief period of a higher noise. But, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wolf, but I think we're suspecting it's the lower octaves and the, and just the content, the persistent sound that's ultimately going to be the issue, coupled with the fact that there's lower background noise, so it's obviously more noticeable. Would you agree with that?
Mr. Chair, that's essentially correct. What, you know, the preliminary information that, that they shared with me yesterday was that some of the, the recent analysis shows that it's in the mid or mid to low-range levels of, of frequency or octave bands. The noise coming from the stack is in a, in an area that they think between 500 and 1,000 hertz, that is, is kind of mid, mid to low range, and there's not another, there's not a lot of other noise sources that create that same frequency level. So, they stand out on their own, going great distances. Also, sound waves of lower frequency are wider or longer, so they travel further. High-frequency sounds do not travel as far. So, so there's the possibility that because there's not a lot of other noise sources of that same frequency range in that octave band, and because that it is lower frequency because of the length of the sound wave, that it's, it's traveling further. And this is what they're trying to isolate by testing all of the sources to say, "Okay, here's what we need to mitigate." And if we look at the data, and I firmly believe that no matter who takes the data, if they use the proper equipment and it gets properly calibrated, and then they have the certifications, and they do it in the right locations, the data's the data, and, and we can have a firm of our choosing validate that data, but I don't think they need to start the, the process of doing another noise study until that data's, is thoroughly evaluated and analyzed, and see what solutions are being proposed. If that data is questionable, then certainly that, that would be the next step to, to do a study. Now, the, the study that would be done by our consultants wouldn't necessarily, for what they've estimated, provide mitigation solutions as far as engineering or corrective action. What it would do is provide, okay, another analysis of, of what noise and where and what it's coming from. But there's probably going to be additional charges that would be required to, to assess a mitigation strategy beyond that $25,000. The consultants we talked to stated that if there is detailed noise mitigation, upon the completion of the study, they would, they would assess and indicate what in the facility was not in compliance, and provide general recommendations on noise reduction for specific equipment if we, if we pursued that after the, but I think the peer review would be the, the first step.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
Well, I've made several trips to the biomass plant, including at like 3 o'clock in the morning to 6:00 in the morning, on one of the mornings when the most number of complaints came in, and have a pretty good sense of what the, the noise issues, the perception of the noise issues. And I think we're running down the wrong rabbit trail when we start worrying about decibel measurements, because I don't think that that is ever going to be something that we're going to be able to hang our hat on from a regulatory sense. What is very clear is that the plainly audible standard is being violated, and I, I can hear the high squeaking sounds of the, the gears and the low whooshing sound and, and other sounds out there. Clearly, what Grek has to do is change some of the facilities at the plant to mitigate the sound. They're going to have to spend significant money to do that, and I think it's our job to make sure that we encourage and perhaps intervene or enforce their willingness to do that. I don't distrust anybody's measurements out there, including some of the citizens who've done measurements. They, they all show basically the same data if you line them up. Everything is below the threshold of the city of Gainesville's noise ordinance, and I think we'll only get less. But that doesn't mean that it, the plainly audible standard is being met. And so, what I think we should be doing is not sweating the measurements, trusting ECT, their good local firm, we know, we, we've used them a lot, and, and encourage that, ours, encourage the Grek and our, and the city to allow our staff to participate in the discussions of what the mitigation options are. There's a parallel with the Florida Rock Cement Plant some 12 years ago or more, and that was where we were dealing with air quality issues, and basically, the, the operators of the plant put a million bucks on the table, and they said, "Go out and you tell us how you would spend this million bucks to reduce the air quality issues." Well, I think Grek ought to be willing to do the same thing, put a significant amount of money on the table for people, whoever, whether it's county staff, or citizens, or GRU staff, or others, to propose how to reduce the, the sound impacts. I think we're beyond the measuring aspects of this and into finding solutions. It may be that at the end of the day, they have to put their fuel operations inside a building. Well, so be it. The coal stack out at the Deer Haven 2 plant, for many years, was open to the sky, and for whatever reasons, GRU built a roof over that coal pile. The same thing could happen out here with this wood chip pile, and it could even include sides on the building. Same thing goes with some of the gear. It's in Grek's interest to spend the least amount of money to, possible, to fix the problem within the regulatory limits. And I don't think those will ever be satisfactory to the people of Turkey Creek or to me. So, what we're going to need to do is encourage and require them to spend significant money blocking the sound or otherwise mitigating it. And until everybody's on board with that, then we're always going to be faced with this, people being able to hear the noise, and it's indeed noise, and it's annoying, and I can, I can certify that here without being a sound expert. So, the, again, a bunch of sound decibel studies and stuff is not really going to solve the problem. What's going to solve the problem are the physical changes to the plant that are designed by acoustical engineers to, to fix the problem, and that's what we should be focusing on. And I've got some notions of a proposed motion when we get around to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Parkinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hutch covered most of the points and probably did a better job as far as, you know, getting it out there. But I will say that I would hope that, that we wouldn't put any sort of dollar figure on, on what it would take to remedy the, the issue. I wholeheartedly agree that, that it doesn't appear that the decibel measurements are going to be what's needed in order to, to make the point that something needs to be done for the, for the people in the surrounding area. Something's going on there. There are a lot of people that have, that have gotten up from Turkey Creek that really weren't vested, one way or another, in the, in the power plant discussion, the biomass discussion, up until it fired up. And, and at that point, I think that we've seen a number of people who have, have had their lives impacted, and I think that, you know, I think it's incumbent upon Grek, as well as the city of Gainesville, and us, to do whatever we can to, to help, help mitigate the, the situation. So, I look forward to seeing what Hutch's motion will be as far as both things. We haven't covered dust, but dust as well as the, the noise situation.
Thank you. Mr. Baird?
Mr. Chair, one last question, and I, I don't know how we ever looked this. I mentioned it in my list. How many days was this testing done for? Because it just says September 12th.
Well, September 12th was the day that staff went on, on the property.
Okay, so I, you had mentioned that ECT had done a testing, and throughout, how many days?
I, I believe the, the Hessler was, assessment was either over a three-day period. ECT, I would have to confirm that, but I, I think it was... On three different days, I believe.
Well, see, that, I guess that's one of the things I'm concerned about.
And, and the reason that it was done on three different days, Mr. Chair, is they wanted to get a background level when the plant wasn't operating, then they took testing wherein the plant was at 70% capacity, and then they took test at 100% capacity at all the different locations.
And it sounds like there's just different types of sounds when startup, shutdown, in different intervals. I would have thought that they would have done a continuous reading over a two, a two to three-week period, just to make sure that you have the ups and the downs and, you know, the sudden noise levels. And then I saw here in the other column that there were a number of 111, 94, 105 decibel levels, and even though I know it's not important, at least it gives us some, at least, term of, of what levels we're talking about. And I didn't understand how those related to the decibel levels of 82 at the dust, at the plant dust collector, and whether there's other areas. So, I'm having a hard time just, you know, kind of getting a, a full understanding. Was the entire realm of testing ability, were they taking into consideration, and over enough periods of time, to take into consideration startups, shutdowns, and some of that, to see were there any major spikes that we're talking about, and at what times of the day would they be? So, again, I'm having a hard time with this, and I didn't know if the other type of testing that we could, that we could then go ahead and say, "This is the type of testing we'd like to see," which is over a two to three-week timeframe before the certificate of occupancy is given. So, I, just some questions to, to get a feel for what we're listening to, or what we're, we're reading, to determine what levels. But I do agree that that clearly audible level is a, a major factor in this, and that, commend you for going out there at 3:00 in the morning, Commissioner Hutchinson.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baird brings up a good point about various operation schedules, and I believe one of the tests that was done by Hessler was during a full shutdown and startup, testing it from the Turkey Creek area. So, I, I'm looking forward to seeing the data. They supposedly did have a, a shutdown and startup, back to full operation, during the monitoring of the test, with monitors in the Turkey Creek location.
All right. Thank you.
And as far as the 110, the higher numbers that you were reading, those were the analysis projections at the machinery. In other words, at the boiler. Those were not the actual readings. Those were the, the model decibel levels.
Right. Well, then, even after that, it says at 1,000 feet, it was 91, 91, and a number of others. So, I saw some pretty high numbers, even at 1,000 feet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Let's move on to the second part, then.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more citizen comments, Mr. Chair?
We're going to have one round of citizen comment period after we finish this. We're going to get a motion on the floor for them to speak to.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Chris Burden, Environmental Protection Department Director. And I'm going to try to condense this a little bit, but I'm going to really be just talking about dust and some of the air quality issues, with a focus on the wood dust, which I think at this point, that's the highest priority and biggest concern we've got going. Just a little bit of review. The Grek plant, the biomass plant, is subject to a Florida Department of Environmental Protection air permit, and the, the county doesn't have any authority with these permits. We can provide input, and we can talk about that this morning, but these permits are issued by the state. There's also, it's been mentioned earlier, the site certification process, which is part of the Florida Power Plant Siding Act. That ties the approval, this certification to these permits and compliance with these air permits. And that becomes important when we start talking about violations of these permits. So, the, the current permit that Grek is operating on is called a construction air permit, and that's actually, it doesn't expire until December 2014. I know it gets a little bit confusing, because we've talked about they're, they're operating at full capacity now. The way the state air permit works is that they, they can actually, and I, I think you're going to see this, calendar year 2014, they may be operating fully, however, they may still be working under this construction permit. The way, the way the state permitting works, it's not really the same as our, you know, closest thing we may have is the building permit and the certificate of occupancy. They do give them this extended period while they can be operating, and yet they still don't have the, the final operating permit. So, what, we, we talked to the State Department of Environmental Protection just yesterday, and they told us that they expect Grek, it's really up to Grek, but they will be applying for their operating permit sometime in, sometime in calendar year 2014. That's what we expect. And it's, it's not a given, they get the permit. There, there's conditions the state can put on that permit, based on what's happening right now and some of the concerns that we've documented. It's, it's similar in some ways to what you do with special use permits, when you issue a permit for, for some kind of an operating facility, and there's conditions that are put on that permit. That it's, it's similar to the way this works at the state level. Just to review briefly, at least to date, what Alachua County's role has been in terms of dealing with air issues at Grek. You may remember that the county, we weren't, we weren't a party to this settlement agreement, but we were identified as a result of it. There was a settlement agreement between some citizens that I think were challenging the site certification and Grek, and the outcome of that is that they did ask the county to play somewhat of a third-party role in terms of reviewing Grek's compliance with their air permits. And I can tell you that at the time, these discussions were going on, the, the county, we weren't part of the discussions or the settlement. If you go back and look, the focus and the concern was really what would be coming out of the smokestack, and what kind of monitoring would need to be done. For example, fine particulates. So, there was, there was most, most of the focus was on the, the smokestack and, and really ambient air. There was really, I don't think there was any discussion of dust, fugitive emissions, which is really what we're dealing with now. So, we do have, under contract, we've got AMAC, which is, they have a local office that used to be environmental science and engineering out in Jonesville. We, we have a contract with them to do some of this third-party monitoring. Up to now, really, the focus was to monitor the smokestack emission and the controls and the testing they have on that. But as I'll explain, we're, we're looking at some adjustments to that. And as, as was mentioned, and we'll show some maps again, the Public Works compound happens to be the nearest neighbor to Grek, and the, a lot of the concerns that you've heard about noise, you can hear, you can clearly hear the noise at the Public Works compound. I think the difference is that the employees out there, they're not trying to sleep at night unless they really have a, a long shift. They, the, but, but I think it's important to understand that even though Turkey Creek and some of the residential neighborhoods are farther away, those are residential areas. They're not making the kind of noises at Public Works. They make their own noises, at least during the day. So, the issue with dust and particulates, however, we, we really believe, the, the bad news is that Public Works is the closest neighbor. The opportunity is really that we do have a test point, and we, we really feel that if we can deal with the dust and the particulate problems at Public Works, we are going to, so, because they're so close, if we can get it... because they're so close, if we can get it to be all right there, then it will be, farther away, you should be able to have the same improvements or even better. Because there's, there's definitely with the dust, there's a direct relationship between how far you are away and things drop out. And I guess the last item is we are coordinating, there's a lot of coordination going on right now, citizens, we're getting calls. I feel for the citizens because they don't know who to call. I mean, whether it's dust or noise, they're getting, they've been getting pointed in a bunch of different directions and we're, one of the things we're trying to do is to make sure people know who to call, that, so they're not, you know, shifted from one agency to the other. We have been in touch, I think, most recently with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Office in Jacksonville. And that's one of the challenges we have with this because that is the closest office. And for example, they were in town last week. They drove over, they got a complaint from a resident in Turkey Creek last week and they drove over from Jacksonville. And I think they, they looked at that, but they, we really need to make sure we're coordinating with them and we're going to continue that. So just to get to the point, we have documented and I'm going to ask Michael Fay in a few minutes to show some pictures. I don't think there's any dispute, we have a real problem with this, the dust blowing over to Public Works. And this is wood particles and wood fibers. And no one is arguing that point. So we've established that. The question is, when is, when are the dust problems going to end? And I know there was a, I think there was a recent report from one of the executives with Greck that referred to the state coming over last week and not finding a problem with dust. Well, we've, we've had problems the day before that and the day after. So it's not, it's not a continuous problem. It has to do with the way the wind's blowing. There's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on, but we have a problem. And I, you know, I don't want anybody to think that anything's been fixed on the dust yet. We have received some cost estimates to do some independent testing on the dust. I'm going to explain why I don't think right now is the time to do that. We've got some other approaches that we think are more cost-effective and really get us where we want to go. But we do have some cost estimates for, for doing that work. And then there's been a lot of work kind of behind the scenes, working with Greck, Public Works and risk management. Because we have, the big concern we have is for our employees. I mean, we've got worker, potential worker exposure issues. This is not ambient, this is like workplace. And so we, we think that's a, it's an important priority for the county regardless of all these jurisdictions and the state permit and all that. We really need to make sure we can have a safe place for our employees to work. So I think Rick showed this picture before. This shows you the proximity of the Public Works compound to Greck. And this area, we were waiting for the new Google photos. This one shows, we've got these circles kind of drawn on where the big wood piles are, but the, if you, if you were to fly over the plant today, you would clearly see this and we've got some ground level shots. I think the big challenge we've got and, you know, we haven't even been through a full year in terms of weather. The, the challenge is that if you look, depending on the prevailing winds, the Public Works compound is directly downwind, particularly if you have a prevailing wind coming from the northeast. And we get a lot of those certain times of the year. You get a storm out in the Atlantic, you know, the northeasters, we can, we can have winds that are coming from the northeast, kind of like coming from Jacksonville and heading, you know, southwest across the state. Again, the challenge we're going to have going forward is that the Public Works compound in, on many days is going to be downwind, immediately downwind from where the wood is being stored and such. And, and that's why, like for example, last, I think it was last Wednesday, the state drove over. It all has to do with which way the wind's blowing. And if the wind, the prevailing wind was not the right direction, it looks really good, but you could come back the next morning and it's a whole different situation. So the challenge we've got is this is just not constant and it's, it's kind of hard to capture some of that. There's, there's, you know, there's some pine trees between the storage area for the fuel and the Public Works compound. And I, I'm, I think the permit allows them to stack the wood 60 feet high. We'll show some pictures. But they're, they're allowed to go 60 feet high. The pine trees between the plant and the Public Works compound are not 60 feet. So there's, you know, there's, if you do have trees, they will knock a lot of the dust down or if you have some physical barrier, but if, if you don't, then you can, you can run into trouble. Just to blow out a little bit, again, with Greck and the Public Works compound, and you do see the Turkey Creek neighborhood, which is really probably the closest residential neighborhood. We have received complaints about dust and air pollution in Turkey Creek. I'm not saying they're not there. We haven't been able to document them the way we have closer at the Public Works compound. But again, I think what we see is that if we can, if we can address the air pollution problems for the Public Works compound, we should be doing a good job, everybody else. And so that's, that's really where we want to concentrate on, on that. The noise is a different issue because again, the people at Public Works, it's not residential use. So we, I understand that's different. Just some photos from the September 12th site inspection that Rick Wolf mentioned and, you know, I'm just going to show a few pictures of the plan. And really, these are, I think Rick pointed out, places you can have noise and simultaneously, some of these are the same areas you can have dust. You do have a lot of trucks a day coming in there. And even though the, the requirement is that the trucks are dumping into this enclosed area, it's not airtight. They do have ventilation systems. I mean, they do, in certain of these areas, they're, they're clearly trying to control the dust. It's not 100%. And there's, you know, a lot of equipment, long conveyor systems. And they do, the permit requires these conveyance systems to be covered, but again, they're not airtight either. They're kind of covered from the top and the, the weather, but they're not airtight. So you could have dust coming from the conveyance. Let's see, just, just some more pictures, but again, and I think this has been mentioned a couple of times, there's this telescoping kind of funnel that drops the, the wood into these piles. And one of the things that we already know that we've had a problem with is that there's a, the permit says that they can't have a lot of air or a lot of, lot of open air between the bottom of that telescope and the top of the pile. And Greck has acknowledged that they haven't really complied with that sometimes. And that, you know, the issue is that for some reason, there's a big gap in between there and you get a lot of wind. It's going to blow, as it's dropping down, you're going to, you're going to have more dust. This seems like a challenging part of the operation because if they get it too close, it can start backing up and clogging up. So it just seems like an issue where, you know, it's going to, it's going to be a challenge going forward to optimize that where you're, you're not clogging it up, but you're also not causing dust. I think what I'd like to do is have Michael Fay, our Public Works Director, show some photographs. So if we can get the overhead. And I'm going to go ahead and let Mike kind of walk you through a couple of photographs here. We have been trying to work with Public Works to, because they're really the eyes and ears of this whole thing and he'll, he'll show you some of these.
Good morning, Michael Fay, Department of Public Works. These are some pictures that we took yesterday afternoon of one of the vehicles that's parked behind, basically between our administration building and the fleet management facility. And basically, this is just showing you some of the wood debris that's accumulating on the vehicle. These are both sides of the, of the vehicle. And then a picture of the, of the front of the vehicle. And then of the roof of the vehicle. Now I can tell you, that's the vehicle that I drove to the board meeting this morning and there was no dust on it this morning, but that's probably because of rain or something that we had last night. And, you know, this, it's periodic. We do have staff that are wearing dust masks when they're outside the facility. And, but we're, we're working with facilities management to make sure that our HVAC systems, the filters on our HVAC systems are changed out routinely. And trying to do the best we can to, to do that. We're probably going to try to get into a higher level of monitoring so that we can document this information for DEP, utilizing just our own staff and whatever we can do to, to monitor the dust accumulations that are occurring on the complex. The people in fleet management have been, you know, are working in open air. They have been experiencing, you know, high discomfort and those types of things ever since they started wood deliveries, which was probably in about July.
Thanks, Mike. I'll go back and finish up the, with the overhead or the slides. The state permit basically says no fugitive dust, period. It doesn't give a concentration or anything. They are not, actually, the word fugitive means it's leaving the property. So as soon as the dust leaves the Greck property and goes on adjoining property, it's violating the state permit. And it's, you know, I, it's not really that complicated and it's not like the decibels and all of that. You just, thou shalt not have fugitive dust. That's the permit. We've, we've discussed this and I'll just walk through, I mean, these are just some excerpts from the permit conditions, but that's what it says. I'm not going to read them to you.
That's mine.
I mean, I can if you want, but it does tie, the permit ties to this best management plan. And this is something that Greck has proposed, an operating plan of how they're going to prevent dust from, from leaving the property. It obviously isn't working yet. And I guess, just so you kind of know where we are in the process, we are, we are documenting that we're still having problems. We are taking in, we are being informed by them when they're making changes. For example, they have committed to ordering these misters and I don't, I don't think they've got them operating yet, but I know they had ordered them. And this is these kind of water misters that should, it should help. We don't know how much. So there are things that they are, they have committed to doing even on an interim basis. I think over the next few months, we want to look at that really hard because we can give input to the state on tightening up their best management plan and, and really tightening up on the conditions in their permit. But the one thing that the state has pointed out is that with this construction permit, the air permit they're under now and the operating permit that they're going to be applying for next year, there's some play in there in terms of what's coming out of the smokestack. I mean, if they're, if they're troubleshooting and if they're stress testing and things, there's, there's some tolerances they allow them during construction for the emissions out of the stack. I mean, they still have to comply with the ambient air standards, but they do give them a little bit of forgiveness. However, on the fugitive dust and, you know, the other way they say in the permit is unconfined emissions of particulate matter, that's another way of saying it, there's no tolerance. You're, you're not supposed to have that during the construction phase and you certainly don't want to have it during the operating. So this issue that's really affecting the Public Works compound and maybe to a lesser extent, because it's farther away, the neighborhoods, there's really a zero tolerance in terms of the permit for that. So...
Mr. Baird?
Yeah?
Can stop you there because you keep saying that and I guess I'm reading the language here and it appears to include a wiggle clause at the end. It says, "Without taking reasonable precautions to prevent such emissions." And we're used to language like that in government. So is it really as hard and fast as you're saying?
Well, that's, that's what the state is telling us. Now, what, and I'll get into it, I mean, how they're going to enforce that and what the penalties are for non-compliance is a whole different thing. But they, there's not supposed to be dust showing up at Public Works. I mean, that's, that's as clear as, as it can be.
I'm delightfully surprised that there would be such a strong standard. That's why I'm asking because it does appear to have this wiggle clause, "Without taking reasonable precautions."
Well, I think the issue with the reasonable precautions, those are preventive. And, you know, what, what they're saying is they don't have to go and gold plate everything on the front end. They have to show that they have this plan, but the performance standard is they can't have fugitive dust. So that, that's really, they're not, they can't have it. They got to do whatever they can to not have it.
Great. Okay.
You know, again, I'm not going to read these, but it, the plan, the, this, the best management practices, this plan does already have some things in it. And I think there may be some questions on whether they're even complying with all of this. But there are some, you know, there's some things that say that they should do things to not have, for example, avoid excessive wind erosion. And, you know, we've had some problems with that. So there's actually some things in, in their plan that they're not able to comply with completely. We do understand that while they're, while they are in this startup mode, it's going to take them some time to really get all of their operating conditions under control. So I, you know, I think that's probably what's going on right now. I will mention odors. I mean, that has been a problem. We've, we've heard complaints from Public Works employees. We've also heard complaints from residents. And Greck has acknowledged that they've had some issues with some wood. I think it was old wood that was maybe wet and possibly decomposing from sitting out there for a long time. And we, we understand that they are aware of that. Again, they've acknowledged it. They're not disputing that the odors were coming from their facility. I think that the dust one, in terms of going forward, the dust one is, is going to be easier to quantify. The odor is going to be more of a challenge. But, but again, there, this has some language about, I think the one word in here that's a little bit more, give some wiggle room is objectional, objectionable odor. I mean, what, what that is, it's, it's not quite as easy to quantify. But we do know that that's another problem. And that's been a problem not only for Public Works employees, but Turkey Creek and some of the other areas. So in terms of the next step, we are working with Public Works. I think one of the things that we are going to do is have a log, a daily log. We've been, actually, just this morning, Michael Fay and I were trying to work this out. But there will be a daily log and that's what the state has asked us to do, is really document this. And what I anticipate, the daily log is going to show that there's good days and there's bad days. It's not going to, it's not showing a continuous problem with the dust because it depends on so many things, if, whether it rained, which way the wind's going and all of that. But we do think it's important to start documenting out at Public Works, you know, what are those daily conditions? What's the wind direction? You know, what's the wind speed that day? And so we're, we're trying to get that to help inform Greck on whether what they're proposing to do is really going to work or not. But this is going to have to be a work in progress. I mean, we, we're going to have to build somewhat of a, of a set of documentation. And again, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection has told us that if we can document this, that they will take that into account in terms of the, the permit conditions and then whether they take enforcement or not. They haven't received enough formal complaints yet to, to take any enforcement action. I mean, that's what they've told us. And like I mentioned, they came out last week, one day, they didn't see a problem. They reported that they didn't see a problem. So we're going to really have to keep at this. And we do think it's important to maintain the communication with Greck. I mean, not only on the dust, but also on the noise. I mean, they, they have, they have committed to doing some things. It's just, you know, they, they can't just flick a switch. I mean, it's not, it's not working that way. And we, we're going to continue to be, I guess, nagging the state to do something, to make sure the permit's enforced. You know, where that goes, we're hoping that we're going to get improvements and, you know, we can, we can resolve this. And that's really about it. The only thing I was going to mention is that we're not recommending paying for this testing for the, for the air monitoring right now. There, there may be a time that we need to do that. The biggest problem I see with it is, first of all, those, those pictures that Michael Fay showed you. I mean, that's worth, we could spend $100,000 on ambient monitoring and in terms of influencing the state to, or influencing Greck to do anything about it, really that physical, visual evidence is just as strong. And the, the... And the challenge with the ambient monitoring, which we did, we got an estimate for doing that at Public Works, it's about $30,000 to do the ambient monitoring. It doesn't really show you the bad days. It shows you these averages. And so, you know, we, there's a good chance that even if we do it, we're going to end up like what you heard about the decibels and the noise volume measurements, that it's not going to violate anything there. So we really want to focus on collecting physical evidence of the dust, whether it's windshields or whether we put some sheets of paper out there or something and start really cataloging that. And that's, that's really our plan. The other reason I'm not recommending this task order with the consultant right now is that we could, we could spend all that money right now to collect all of this data saying that there's a problem. Meanwhile, Greck is doing these things to make improvements and, you know, all they have to be able to do is show the state that they've, they've made these improvements and we've got all this data that's all of a sudden really obsolete and we have to go back out and do it again. So I know there's a lot of interest in getting on this and I think we are. I don't recommend hiring this consultant to do the ambient testing now. Again, maybe in the future, but really, we just, we've got to look at the timing of when to do that. And I do think once a lot of these improvements have, the ones that they've promised, get them in place, let's see if they're working. And then if we don't think they are at that point, we may have to take another look at doing some more of this testing. But again, with the particulate, the dust issue, you can really go with just the physical evidence. That's probably just as good and, you know, we're not spending all the money to do that. I know that it's unfortunate, but it's important. Michael Fay has reminded his employees that they have dust masks available. And I don't think anybody believes that's a solution to this. I mean, the solution is not having the dust in the first place. That being said, we have employees out there that they have issues. So, I mean, in an interim period, that may be part of what has to happen. I mean, if we have employees, it's just not right that they're put in that situation. So that's really all I have on the dust.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burge. A couple of lights on up here. Commissioner Pinkerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Chris, the last thing, it still affects our eyes, you know, unless they're wearing the total, and they fog up, so, having had some experience and all that. The documentation will include the conditions, what's going on as far as wind, humidity, raining, not raining, all that kind of stuff.
Right, right.
There were some pictures shown earlier, those three pictures of, not in your presentation, of smoke or whatever that's around there. And obviously, you don't have the analysis of it, but theoretically, is that water vapor or is that, you know, is that something that the EPA would monitor? I mean, because it looked pretty, it looked like it was definitely coming from the biomass plant. And is that something that also contains particulates or something that shouldn't be escaping?
Mr. Chair, and we've looked at those pictures and I think they were taken early in the morning, I believe they were. I mean, if you drive by any power plant early in the morning, certain conditions, you'll see, and it's, for a lot of people, it's disturbing, but you'll see what looks like some kind of a smoke cloud and it can be, a lot of it's water vapor. I'm not saying that, with everything else going on out there, I'm not going to dispute that there was an issue. We weren't able to validate anything other than just water vapor. You know, again, with the fugitive dust and everything else going on, I mean, you could have a haze that's, that's got wood particles in it, not from the smoke stack, but actually, you know, blowing from the wood pile that's mixing in with the water vapor from the, from the power plant itself. So we're aware of those and we weren't able to validate anything.
The question, I guess another question, another way to phrase it would be, with the monitoring that we are hiring somebody to do, that Greck financed, but y'all EPD is in charge of, we will detect what's coming out of the smoke stack.
It should, I think one of the things are the, the third party that we're hiring to do the review, I mean, they will be looking at the plant operating logs. And so, for example, if that was really, you know, pollution, like smoke or something that was not properly filtered, there would be a log that would show some upsets or something. I mean, there's a lot of continuous monitaries and all, monitoring equipment. So I think we would catch, we would catch something like that, but we haven't really started that yet. We've gotten, we're ready to do that, but we're kind of waiting for Greck to get to a certain point in the operation where they've stabilized. And, because that's really where, if we're going to find violations of what's coming out of the smoke stack, that's the point where the state's going to pay more attention in terms of enforcement.
And I would hope we could do whatever we could to hold their feet to the fire as far as what gets off the property. You know, those are our people and that's not something that we want them to be, you know, forced to breathe and experience to deal with. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
I think our EPD staff and codes enforcement staff have done an exceptional job under a pretty short timeframe to come up with the information that they have. I'm going to go ahead and put a motion on the floor and, but before I do, I just want to say that there's a, there's a fine line between diplomacy and adversarial actions that we need to take or consider. And right now, I believe that Greck is not denying any of these problems and that they're doing what they believe is the right thing to do. We may not agree that they've gone far enough at some point. And so with that in mind, I'm going to put a motion on the floor that contains some aspects of, hey, cooperate with us, and some aspects of, we're going to be adversarial about this. And I think ultimately it'll be our judgment as a commission with a lot of input from staff and citizens as to which of these roads to go down, but I want to get them all started and I want to put the parties on notice. So here's my motion. There's four parts. Part one is send a letter from the chair to Greck and the Gainesville City Commission requesting that county staff and our consultants be allowed to participate in all discussions of mitigation options for the noise and dust issues. Part two is to provide notice to Greck, the city of Gainesville and FDEP that Elatua County intends to intervene in the permitting proceedings with our intent to oppose final operational permitting if satisfactory progress is not made in controlling noise and fugitive dust. Three, to notify Greck with a letter from the county attorney that Elatua County as an affected party will participate in public nuisance litigation if acceptable progress is not made reducing noise, dust and odors affecting our property. And then four, request the county attorney and county manager to bring back to the board any recommended amendments to our noise ordinance, including decibel standards. This should also include how many municipalities request that the county ordinance be applied within city boundaries. And that's my motion.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Discussion from the board about the motion on the floor. Anybody want to make any amendments or suggestions? I think we're all pretty much on the same page with this, so. Discussion from commissioners. Commissioner Baird?
Just real quickly, I really feel, and I know that we addressed this issue, but either I'll go ahead and do it in a separate motion or we can include it in here, to go ahead and have an independent study ourselves between now and the end of October, to go ahead and assess our determination of the different levels and on a continuous basis over a two-week at least timeframe, but at least from now till the permitting process. Would be my recommendation, if you incorporate it now, great. If not, then I'll just go ahead and make another motion later on and see where we go from there.
Commissioner Hutchinson, did you hear that? Do you want to incorporate that into your motion?
Yeah, let's, let's do that as a separate motion and we may also want to provide some direction in terms of hiring consultants and so forth. I didn't put those things in that motion because those are strict, those are simply about positioning ourselves with respect to the city and Greck and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, I have no problem with the motion because of course I second it, but I have another question for staff. And that is, in terms of the startup of the plant, is Deer Haven 2 running at the same time? And so how do you determine where the actual noise is coming from if the other power plant is running? And if there are any future data that indicates what the DBs are for the Deer Haven site before we even built this plant? I'm just curious because if you've got noise coming from the west and you've got noise coming from the east, and, man, that's a lot of noise. And so I'm just curious, how do you really pinpoint the noise? That's just a question I just was thinking about. Because I, if Deer Haven is running and then they're running and testing, how do you determine the noise? And would the noise be even greater? Especially at low frequencies?
Exactly. Mr. Chair, noise measurement in the ambient environment is not, it's a complex subject. What we try to do is get background levels when other things are not operating. In other words, they did a background level when they knew the Greck plant wasn't operating. Hopefully, they'll have background levels when Deer Haven's not operating. But it's not just Deer Haven or other things. There's an asphalt plant in the city of Elatua. There is air conditioning and pool pumps within the neighborhood of Turkey Creek. There's formulas for evaluating decimal levels basis ambient plus background or ambient or background without ambient. And as I mentioned, it's not log, it's not additive, it's logarithmic. In other words, two sound sources that create a 90-decibel level may add together to be a total of 93 decibels. So it's, there's formulas for doing this and there's mathematics involved, but you have to know what you're doing and where you're doing it. For example, if you take a sound level measurement and you're doing it holding the meter up against your chest, it's supposed to be four feet out and clear if anything, otherwise you'd get reflection that's bouncing back to it. The people that are acoustical engineers are expert in the field. They know, they have to certify and calibrate their machinery, they have to do the proper settings, like a type 2 meter and a slow response setting and the A-weighted scale. So there's protocols to follow when you do this sound level measurement. But, make a long story short, yes, you need to find out what other ambient, what other background levels are there when you're taking your measurements.
And I guess that would be done if we hired a consultant, I guess.
And it's also being done by the consultants that are currently working out there.
Okay. Thank you.
And in part of their evaluation, you know, they're giving weather conditions, the equipment used, when it was certified and calibrated, and all those particulars within those studies.
Okay. I stated earlier, and I didn't get a chance to ask the question about the dust, are there some mitigations going on about the dust? And will we be monitoring those improvements that they have done thus far in terms of what they've moved it from one side to the other side and they're spraying water or something? Keep the...
Okay. Mr. Chair, Chris Burden, Environmental Protection. My understanding is they have already made some changes, some operational changes. For example, I think when they're taking fuel deliveries from the trucks and when they're moving some of the wood, if there's high winds, they've, they've told us that they've changed that operationally. Now, if you notice, part of this best management practice that was part of their site certification, they already committed to doing some of that, but it, we understand they've done some new things. I think they're still trying to make some adjustments. These misters, we haven't been out there to see them operating yet and I'm assuming, we've been getting pretty good updates from them. I'm assuming once they get them up and going, we'll get notice and we'll go out and look at that. There's a lot of moving parts. I've said it before and I just think we're going to, I mean, we want to be hopeful, hopeful that they're going to be able to fix all this. I tell you though, if you, if you really look, the footprint of where they put their wood storage area, I mean, for the Public Works compound, you couldn't have put it at a place that, I mean, it's, you couldn't, if you wanted to put it right down, you know, right upwind and cause trouble, that's, now we're finding that's where you'd put it. The problem is, they can't really move that wood pile. I mean, it's, it's, they built the power plant on the other end, you know, on the end that's, I guess, closer to Deer Haven. So it's, I think, I think we're going to have some challenges here and it's not going to be easy, especially on windy days. And you got to keep in mind that this summer, we had a lot of rain, which helps. I mean, we, if we get in another one of these extended droughts where the springs quit flowing again and windy, it's a whole different ballgame.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, the pictures that you showed with the, I guess, some of the wood particles, when was that taken?
It was taken yesterday afternoon.
And they made some improvements?
Well, no, I think, I think, I think what they've said is that they're ordering misters to put over the piles, to keep the piles wet, to help minimize the dust. But no, I don't think that they've made those improvements yet.
Okay.
And I can't tell you, I can't tell you, you know, how long that dust had accumulated, just that, you know, when we went out to the vehicle yesterday, it was covered.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. No more lights. We're going to open up to the public now. We have two different microphones you can use. Please come forward. Lights are for your benefit. Five minutes, we would ask you to respect. I'm not going to cut you off in mid-sentence, but when the red light comes on, please finish your thought so everyone gets a chance to speak before lunch. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Jim Conish, thank you so much for your concern about the issue and thank you to your staff for all the hard work that they're doing. Mr. Chestnut makes a very important point and it's important to know that in 16 hours of hearings on this, I have learned that the GRU intends to shut the Deer Haven plant down for maintenance this month until February. During the DEP permitting process, which was contested by the citizens, Greck fought against any kind of baseline measurements so that we would know just what the impact of the plant was. So with Deer Haven shut down, we do have a unique opportunity to establish a baseline without the commingling of Deer Haven and the biomass. And we need to, you know, possibly take advantage of this because Deer Haven will be shut down for maintenance this month until February. What you're doing is so timely because the city commission is being goaded by GRU to pay between $620 million and $720 million for this facility, 100% financed, which will degrade their debt rating and push their overall debt from $1 billion to $1.6 to $1.8 So they would be inheriting all this and I'm sure you wouldn't back off just because they owned it. I'm troubled by this, what I brought up earlier is, when you say Greck, well, Greck is not operating the plant, they haven't paid the business tax, they're not even supposed to be operating, they may have an occupational license. Who are we dealing with? When you say you're working with people, who are you working with? Are you working with the people actually sitting there at the controls? Or are you dealing with some financier in Boston that has no idea about what's going on with this thing? We need to really pinpoint who is actually in control. Who's behind the wheel of this plant personally? Because we may be able to go against that person on a personal level in addition to this, you know, murky corporate structure that we're up against. And most importantly, this is GRU's partner. And why is not GRU managed and also being held? And there's some very... And there's some very important laws that took effect July 1st because this collaboration between private entities and public entities is something that's been formally codified by statute. And you're going to see a lot more of public infrastructure built with private funds. This is where it's going. And there's been important changes to the Public Records Act and to other laws governing public contracting that come into play here. All of Greck's documents now are clearly public records. And Mr. Washington has spent countless hours trying to obtain documents that the city is entitled to from Greck in terms of their operating procedures, how much power they're generating, and he can't get any responses. GRU's supposed to be reporting in real time to GRU just what's going on out there. That's a matter of the contract. The contract requires compliance with all state, federal, county, and local laws, or else they're in breach. So we also have to be working directly with GRU and the city to make sure they enforce their contract because they're going to start kicking out $5.5 million a year to this firm, whether they get any power or not. And the power is going to be triple the market price. So this is very, very important that you press ahead at this juncture. This is going to affect your budget in terms of the rate you're paying. So I'm very disturbed that you're talking to Greck, but Greck is not operating the plant. They've contracted that out. Those people haven't gone down and paid the business tax. So I want to know who is personally in charge of this plant so that if we have to take criminal or civil action, who's on the hot seat? Because they just come down to city commission meetings and read prepared statements, someone lowly down the totem pole. I don't ever see, you know, who's actually running this plant. Who is the chairman of the operating staff of this plant? Where we can go and finger that person if something really bad happens. And the county attorney, under the new statutes, needs to get together with Mr. Washington and parrot all the public records requests Mr. Washington has made that have not been answered. And we need to get the information out. It's a criminal violation not to comply with the public records law. And why should Mr. Washington be hammered with all these fees and runarounds? We need the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conish. Good morning.
Debbie Martinez, I want to first echo-
By the way, the motion is up on the board now, if anyone wants to know.
I would like to echo Mr. Jim Conish, who's an attorney and an expert on Gainesville Regional Utilities, especially the compliments that he paid every single member on this board and your wonderful and excellent staff. I just wanted to give you just a little short update. Mr. Rick Wolf, I wanted to let him and you all know that county, no, city attorney Nicole Shally admitted yesterday at the city commission to me, and she was given a chance to repeat it, but we ran out of time. She misspoke when she said the noise ordinance requires that it be plainly audible and read by a meter. It's "or." And so what needed to be done was the city manager needs to direct Gainesville Police Department to enforce the noise ordinance because it is in clear violation of the noise ordinance. Irritating and annoying noise from a reasonable person. In other words, it's not schizophrenic in hearing voices and is not hypersensitive. All you need is the plainly audible to enforce the Gainesville noise ordinance. And then one thing about the consultant, we keep saying, "We have hired a consultant." We not be Greck. We not be Greck. So we have hired a consultant. That is Greck who has hired a consultant. And it's not the ECT or E, I don't know the acronyms of that one that he was discussing. I think it's ECT. That's not the one that we're concerned about. It's Hessler, the one that they've hired to do this acoustical 3D study that they should have done prior to constructing. He has a history of cooking the book, so to speak. His integrity is in severe question. So if we're not going to hire an independent consultant, then disregard his studies. But I support the motion, and I can never thank you enough for looking out for the people. We're finally seeing a government that's here to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And thank you.
Thanks for being with us. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Harold Save again. Thank you for that motion. Commissioner Hutchinson, as well put, and I agree with everything that was said in the motion. And we have established that instruments, other than the human ear, are not, are not the appropriate way. Like voting with a diabole machine is not the proper way to get the results. What we need is a good night's sleep as the ultimate test for the cessation or the mitigation of noise. Mitigation is a tricky word because you can reduce something and it still won't go away. It'll still keep you up at night. So we have to keep that in mind. And I agree with the motion, and you all vote. Have a good day. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next?
Good morning. My name is Frank Nosco. I'm a resident of Turkey Creek and have not been very involved in this until my one-inch windows shook when they started up every night at about 10:30. And I'm the person they call the constant complainer at GPD. When they did the study, and I'd just like to add to what Mr. Wolf put out, there is a map, and he can find it in the documents, where they took their initial continuous monitoring study of this property before anything was there. And the averages run at location 4, which would be at the front gate, between 59 decibels. It depends on the time of day, but they were pretty well up there on a vacant piece of property. Now, all of a sudden, Lieutenant Flowers is in my yard, and he says, "I want to test in your backyard." And I said, "That's not where the noise is the loudest. It's in my front yard." "Well, this is where we're going to test." And being, having done environmental testing myself, I've been involved with air consulting engineers for 30 years. And I'm a general contractor, and I've built power plants as a mechanical contractor participant. This, this building is designed to flip. When you build a plant and you want to own it a long time, you build walls around it. It's a contained structure. This is nothing but a steel shell with some equipment in it. There is no way in Godly's earth that you can quiet this place down unless you build some walls around it. We just flew, my mother passed away. We flew into Cleveland Hopkins Airport in Cleveland, where I grew up. And at the end of the runway, on both ends where the planes take off, there's these huge sound walls. And that, one of them is to stop the noise from going to the west, and the other is to stop the noise going to the east. And that's probably what it's really going to take. Mr. Hutchinson was right on target. You know, they have salt tents over, the salt piles in Cleveland, you know. And we went down the shoreway, and she had never been where I grew up. And she saw windmills, and she saw all kinds of stuff, and she saw a power plant. And guess what? It's in a big concrete building, and you can hear it. Now, it's not a wood plant. It happens to be a gas plant. But they're meeting those requirements that they've pledged to. And finally, I didn't have a chance to make you all copies of this, but when you read through their permit, Gainesville Energy Certified Site Certification Application, and all these other documents, it's hard to find the word Turkey Creek or the Alachua Maintenance Department or Roadworks Department anywhere. I mean, it's mentioned briefly, Turkey Creek's mentioned like twice, and there's one photo. You have to really go through it. And all the pictures are skewed so that you don't even notice it's there. So if you're a regulatory person in Tallahassee reading this document, you would have swore this plant is out in the middle of no man's land. And that's really significant because they kind of deceived everybody. And then one last point is, somebody told me last night at Alachua that Alachua was never notified of this land use change by the city of Gainesville as part of a cross-comp plan agreement. I don't know anything about this stuff. But you might want to check into it, have Mr. Wagner check into it, that did they actually send you notification? I was trying to get the lady to send me a list of the actual people they sent notification to. And I don't think the city of Alachua or Alachua County was on this list when they passed all these requirements. So there was never any comment from the other communities except for some workshops, and they blew those off. So thank you so much, and I sure appreciate your work.
Thanks for being with us. Who'd like to speak next? Good afternoon.
I've been very patient here, but I'm Ernesto Martinez. And I first want to commend you, each and every one of you, for showing the concern and the sincere regard and the positive decisive action that is reflected in Mr. Hutchinson's motion. I strongly encourage you to support this motion, follow through with it, and do like you always do as a body of five, unlike that body of five, of seven across the street that can't agree on the time of day. I mean, I have to blow off a little steam here, but Mr. Hutchinson referred to giving little credit to the DCB or DBL or ABD. What it is, is a B-I-G-D-O-G. It's a big dog. Staying with the season, though, I'm going to call it a big witch. And it is a giant witch, with or without a broom. And these seven people across the street, on a good day, one and a half or maybe two of them will reflect the concern that you are reflecting today. But they refer, they actually want to marry this witch. They truthfully discuss this and refer to this as a partner. They call GRU, Greck, a partner. They have sometimes gone as far as called it a marriage. And I'm asking you, if you were in a marriage that had these problems, would you not go for that loaf of bread? I would, in a minute. But also, if I may, just one more thing. You may or may not have heard with respect to this noise issue. It's like the Mayberry cops or the, whatever those cops were. You call one number, and they send you to another number, and it turns out to be unincorporated, but it got incorporated, but it's lost in the weeds. It is a joke. It's a disgrace. Needs to be dealt with seriously and aggressively, as you all are attempting to do. And I want to thank you sincerely for doing this fine work, which would never get done across the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good afternoon.
Is it afternoon already? Good afternoon, then. Joe Beatty, I just want to tell you, thank you very much for this motion. And it seems like you all support it. I hope you all vote for it. It's about time that, that somebody start protecting the citizens of Alachua County. And it's good to see that you're going to do it. The only other comment I would make is, perhaps you might consider an additional motion to send a letter to the Gainesville City Commission asking them to enforce all the provisions of their contract and the laws and ordinances of the city of Gainesville. I think that would also go a long way into helping mitigate problems. I don't, I don't want the problem mitigated. I want it eradicated. I think especially my concern for the people of Turkey Creek is that their subdivision, their, their community be returned to the state it was before this plant fired up. I think that's the only right thing to do. But I support this motion, and thank you all so much for your attention to the citizens. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ray Washington, citizen of Alachua County. I very much appreciate Commissioner Hutchinson's motion, and I wouldn't advise changing any of it. I think it's all worded exactly right. I've been a fairly consistent and sometimes unfortunately strident critic of the city commission. I do believe that there's been movement over there. And I do believe that this letter may give some background and some ballast to some of those folks on the city commission who are now, in my opinion, and this is someone who's come a long way in the other direction, actually started to exercise some of their oversight responsibilities. With the exception of two commissioners who were on the commission at the time the Greck contract was approved, I think there are five commissioners now, at least, who, who do realize that there have been some changes. And sometimes it's hard to get out of a position that you've been in before. And I believe that part of what this county resolution may accomplish is to, to help that process happen. So I very much appreciate it. I did get a chance to listen to part of what was stated this morning. And none of this has been discussed at the city commission. And I don't blame that on the commissioners so much as on the management of GRU. GRU's presentations, as other people have said, 14, 16 hours, have not quantified any of these risks. GRU hired a, an individual firm from Kansas City to come in and basically read catalogs and say, "The Mezzo boiler is a great boiler. The Wolf handling system is a great handling system. The Siemens turbine is a great turbine." But that doesn't address the issue here. Somebody has put this together. And the people putting it together have, have done some, some things that need to be fixed. And that's what you're encouraging. And Commissioner Botcher, last night particularly, introduced a very lucid explanation of what, why it's in this community interest for Greck to continue to own this plant and for the city of Gainesville not to take it on until these issues are fixed at some point down the road. How much more time do I have?
The little yellow light will come on when there's 30 seconds left.
I'm just trying to anticipate how much.
I'm sorry, I don't know. I'm just looking at those lights.
Two minutes? Okay. I've given some background to the clerk, and I hope he'll distribute it. It's a study of noise annoyance due to low frequency noise in the home. And this is not new stuff. This has been known for a long time. And I think your staff has pretty much gone into that. The point that I'd like to make is that this information was known to the drafters of the municipal ordinance at the time it was drafted. It's not accidental that the Gainesville ordinance is drafted in the disjunctive, that there is a noise violation because of decimal levels, that there is because of the plainly audible past 200 feet, and because of a disturbance to a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities or sensitivities. There's a reason for that. And the information that I've passed out will explain that. And I, there's nothing you can do to help the city commission and the city, and it's not appropriate to interpret their own ordinances. However, I would guess that some of their concern is that they don't want to be considered arbitrary and capricious to come in and say, "Hey, we're not using a decimal meter." But it's really important to know that in order to be found arbitrary and capricious, Greck would have to identify another instance in which hundreds of people have made noise complaints, and the city has not acted. So I don't think that's going to happen. I think the noise ordinance can be enforced, and I hope it will be enforced. And I hope your letter helps that. One last thing. I was part of the negotiation with the predecessors to Greck. 42% owners, 58% of those folks weren't there. But we tried to get a wall. We tried to get them to put a wall up. And their response to that was, "Well, it's going to be too expensive." We pointed out, "Well, there's this plant up in Georgia." He said, "Well, it's only 58 megawatts. That's too high. It's too expensive for us." You're absolutely right. This is a matter of cost. Greck has said they'll try to do what's feasible. What this body needs to do, and what I hope the city commission will do, was, is to make it feasible for them to obey their contract because if they don't, there'll be a financial impact. And you're helping with that, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Mr. Chair, Bruce Nelson, I'll try to be quick. These people that have been exposing this biomass nightmare are so courageous. Commissioner Hutchinson's motion, Mr. Chair, is dead on. And you see how they behave differently with government response to their facts. I would like to say, having listened to several presentations about Mr. Jim Gordon, the person who puts the sales of these biomass clean, green, renewable energy plants together with a horrible track record, is primarily in the business to contract or to spoke is dead on. This plant was made to turn to collect tax credits. That's what has occurred several times already with this plant. This, people are multi-multi-mega-millionaires-plus running energy sc- This, people are multi-multi-mega millionaires plus, running energy scams on people like a non-expert city commission who had some vision of stopping world global warming. It's basically a con. It's been turned over several times and just like Ray Washington just mentioned, they haven't done any mitigation for noise because they actually are forcing the city now to try to take action quick. You know why? Because there's tax credits at stake. That's what Mr. Gordon wants. He wants to turn the plant again. And that's how they're making the money off there so they could care less what they do to the people of Turkey Creek. My two great grandchildren in Newberry, breathing the small particulate contamination that pediatricians have testified, is extremely damaging to young infants. So, understand who you're dealing with here. These are profiteers, mega profiteers, and you need to hold their feet to the fire. If this is a clean, green, renewable energy, then we need to make them the proof of the pudding's in the burning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who's next?
Janie Hendricks. I'll be brief. I, I'm so pleased with the motion. I, I hope that it, that you approve it. I might suggest another motion and that is to, to further pressure the city under the, the comp plan because there was no notice sent out under provision 1.1.6 where the city shall provide notice to the county and all municipalities and, and opportunity to be heard as to the concerns from local governments. So, that, that, please consider that as an additional motion, as further leverage and pressure on the city of Gainesville. And thank you so much for all you're doing.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
George Repati, Gainesville resident. I applaud Commissioner Hutchinson's motion and I urge you to maintain focus and scrutiny like a laser. If you recall during the approval, the permitting process for the Newberry cement plant, there are a lot of contentious arguments and statements made, some alleging misinformation. I hope that you maintain that intense focus because there's so much at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Do anyone else like to speak? Okay, we're going to close out citizens' comment period and come back to the board for action. Commissioner Hutchinson?
One minor amendment on the very end of paragraph three. It should say, "An odor is affecting the county's property and employees."
Second to agree?
No. Because I think that's the basis for our action there.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Baird?
What about surrounding areas too?
Well, I think that the difference between three and the other ones is three is where we as an affected party, because we're an adjacent landowner, we have employees there, and public nuisance litigation is where we would be, that's not part of the permitting process. I'm trying to separate the two things out because I think we have a particular standing as an adjacent property owner with employees there that are being affected. So, that's why three is kind of separate from the other stuff.
Okay. I do understand that it's, well, I'm getting the implications, but the good unintended consequences would be that if we solve the issue being right next door, we probably solve it everywhere else. So, you got it.
Well, there's that and it may well be that we don't initiate any legal action, but somebody else might and this would allow us to join in if, if that occurs.
Thank you.
Further discussion from the board? I have a couple of questions then. First of all, I support the motion. I think it strikes the right balance. This issue of plainly audible, Mr. Attorney, as opposed to the actual decibel standards, I would just ask that number four include an explanation of that as well, address the issue, because it seems to, the enforceability seems to kind of hinge upon whether or not we're taking a decibel reading or whether or not the applicable standard is plainly audible. And we've heard differing testimony this morning and I don't know what the city's ordinance says, but if you could address that issue when you're providing the information requested in item number four? If the, if maker of the motion is okay with that?
Well, and let me just respond to that. My concern is that we, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If, I don't want to be in a position where we are enforcing something on, or attempting to enforce something on Greck or anybody else without making it applicable to everybody. And this plainly audible standard is, may not be the state of the art anymore in terms of legal wording, or there may be case law out there, there may be some other issues. So, what I'd like to do, I don't know when the last time the county looked at our noise ordinance, probably in association with the airboats, but I want to make sure that we have a state of the art noise ordinance and that all these small municipalities, which, I mean, Alachua doesn't even have one, it may be that it's more efficient for us to produce the ordinance and do the research and so forth than expecting every municipality to do it and some of them may want to join us. And I'm not suggesting that a new noise ordinance or revised noise ordinance would necessarily be applicable, applicable backwards to existing uses, but I don't even know the answer to that. It may be that it would be. So, my, my concern there is just let's be sure that we are dealing with the best available recent information on how noise ordinances are written and how they're enforced.
Well, to be clear, what I'm asking for is just an explanation to the city attorney, or the county attorney, I'm sorry, about the city's ordinance and how it applies. And your light is on, Mr. Wagner.
Mr. Chair, I, I really don't think it's appropriate for me to advise you on how the city applies its ordinance. I think my role is to advise you on how to make our ordinance better. Part of that advice will be to implement, we already have a plainly audible standard in our ordinance. Actually, that's been a major, of the few, there's only been about five or six appellate cases in 25 years in Florida involving noise regulation. And one of the issues has been this plainly audible standard. And recently, the Supreme Court of Florida upheld the plainly audible standard in the boombox case involving the state statute on, on the basis that it was not vague, so that we have some ground there from the state Supreme Court to revise our ordinance. We already have a, a good plainly audible standard in it. The other thing about the county's ordinance is that it has not been revised in many years and I think this drill is necessary. We need to start with discussions with the sheriff's office once we, if, if the threshold decision to me is who's going to enforce it. And I've told staff this, they know I'm going to say this because actually, the enforcement of the, the, who's going to enforce the noise ordinance, whoever's going to continue to do that, if the sheriff's going to continue to do that, we need to discuss how the noise is, ordinance is written by the sheriff. As it relates to the cities, especially the smaller municipalities that don't have a noise regulation program, we should go to them and ask them, once we have the ordinance prepared in draft form, whether or not they want to be included in it. Then the board can make a decision knowing their position. We could still include it in it, include them in it and they could still opt out of it. Or we could just say, "You don't want to be in it. We're not going to do it." With that comes several significant, significant monetary resource issues for the county and I, as it relates to noise regulation. So, this topic's not just timely because of this controversy. I've thought that we should revisit the noise ordinance for some time, so I'm glad you included that in the motion.
If the noise that generates the complaint originates in the city of Gainesville and the person who complains about hearing it is in the unincorporated county, please clarify whose, which ordinance applies?
Well, actually, we have a provision in our ordinance that says that we, we, we can allege a violation if we, if we are, if the noise can be heard on property in the unincorporated area. Then the next issue is, well, how do we enforce that violation? And that makes it more complicated because actually our enforcement structure for ordinance violations has to do with the unincorporated area, which is the code enforcement board. That's how we enforce our ordinances. So, this is not a, a simple issue to address.
So, the city's ordinance is irrelevant to us? The only one that we can or would enforce would be the county's ordinance?
Right. We couldn't enforce the city's ordinance. We couldn't enforce our ordinance in the city, except to the extent the noise emanates within a city and you can hear it in the unincorporated area.
Well, that's exactly what's going on. The noise is starting in the city of Gainesville and it's being heard in the unincorporated county and so.
Well, actually, when you dig into, when you dig into the ordinance, you actually have to be able to see the source of the noise from the place where you're reading the meter. So, you, you have to, you have to be able to be line of sight. So, you have to see the source of the noise. So, nobody's done that yet, but that is an issue that I think actually we ought to be looking at as it relates to the rewrite of the noise ordinance.
Maybe you answered it. If so, I apologize, but I'm still not clear. I don't know what to tell people when they ask me. The noise originates in the city of Gainesville. If a resident of Turkey Creek, which is in the city of Alachua, or in the Hague, which is in the unincorporated county, complains or files a complaint, upon the basis of which ordinance would any legal or enforcement action be taken? Would it be the city's ordinance? Would it be the, or the county?
If it's the county taking the enforcement ordinance, the enforcement action, it would be based on the county's ordinance, not the city's ordinance.
Okay.
And we would have to be able to prove that we meet the plainly audible standards in our ordinance and the criteria for plainly audible, which is relatively consistent with the state Supreme Court case. There needs some tweaking to it, but it's relatively consistent. The, the, the question is, what, what, what we really need to do is take a look at our noise ordinance and decides, decide what noise generators we want to put into the plainly audible standard. Mr. Wolf has a lot of expertise on this. We may need to also get with another consultant who's done one recently and address those kind of questions as it relates to the revision of the noise ordinance. The key point is, our, our noise ordinance, we have not revised that in many, many years.
Okay. I have two more questions and I'm sorry, we're not going to take any more public comment at this time.
May I interrupt?
On the point, yeah, you.
What difference does it make about line of sight if it's a noise thing? So, what if you can't see it?
The Supreme Court said, "In order to use the plainly audible standard, you have to have line of sight to the noise generator." And that's what our ordinance currently says. And, and it's basically to be able to, be able to prove that the generation of the noise is the one you're siding. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question and I'm not sure anyone can answer it, but the land, how far to the north of this site is it before you reach unincorporated area again? And what's the land use there? Anyone on staff answer that question? It's, how far to the north of this facility do you have to go before you reach unincorporated area again? And what is the land use there?
Mr. Chairman, the, the property directly to the north of, of the city of Gainesville property is unincorporated Alachua County and.
Rural ag?
No, directly north of the next property, yeah. It's, here, we, we can get back, there you go. Here's the unincorporated area of the county right here. I, I believe that would be zoned agriculture.
Rural ag. Okay. Thanks. And then the last question, Mr. Attorney, can you address this question that several have raised about the intergovernmental cooperation element in the comprehensive plan? To your knowledge, were there any violations of the requirements in that element?
I can't address specifically. First off, I don't know specifically whether or not the city of Gainesville did a comprehensive plan amendment for this location to allow the biomass plant. They already had a power generation facility there. I suspect they already had it, land use designated for those type of institutional and utility uses. And I suspect, but do not know, that they already had their map in place and their policies in place. I do know that at least as it relates between the county, Alachua County staff and the city of Gainesville staff, the normal course of coordination is for the two governments to exchange as a coordination process, proposed comprehensive plan amendments. The planning department is the lead on that. We'd have to ask them specifically if there was a comp plan amendment for the, that the city did for this site and if there was, did we receive a coordination packet to give us a chance to provide input? I don't think we keep track of what's going on between Gainesville and the other cities in the county.
Okay. Just want to know whether or not we followed our own comprehensive plan. So, without objection, if we could find out about that and report back to the board, are we included in the motion or not? Doesn't really matter. I just want to make sure I get the answer to that.
I think we ought to ask the growth management director if that coordination occurred on the biomass plant. First off, did they have to do a comp plan amendment? Because that's where the intergovernmental coordination applies. And the second thing is, if they did, did the, did the city staff send the draft plan amendment, the map and the policy documents to the county for comment?
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hutchinson?
There's also the power plant citing, the Florida Power Plant Siting Act that I think has a lot of notice requirements to adjacent local governments. And I'd be surprised if they didn't follow that, but I think we should also look into what those notice requirements are or were and whether or not we received notice.
Okay. The time has come to vote on the motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you all for everyone who's come and participated so far. We'll take this up again.